Thank you, and I'll move into a roll call and conflict of interest check. We'll start with trustee Nolte.
Here and none.
Trustee Abbott.
Here, none.
Treasurer Metz.
Here, none.
Clerk Stambu Elise.
Here, yes. My son has put in a bid for the Dexter Township lawn grounds.
Okay. Trustee Sanders will be arriving late. Trustee Sakinga.
I'm here and none, except for I will be a customer, single.
And Supervisor Scott, here and none. We'll now move into approval of the agenda. I do have a slight change to the agenda for an item I passed out at your desk. It is the approval for the supervisor to name a hearing officer under the dangerous buildings ordinance. And I would like to move that to action item C. As an amendment to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the addition of action item C.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Nolte.
Trustee Nolte.
Hearing none will move into a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The agenda is approved as amended. And we'll now move into our first call for public comment, which is our call for public comment on agenda items.
Sorry.
I saw that Dexter Senior Center was on the consent agenda today, and I've been in communication with Samantha and Michelle recently. And so I just wanted to come in today to thank you all for the support of the senior centers in our area. And we are really looking forward to building our partnerships with you in the future. I did send Samantha some upcoming events that we are, you know, working to include and promote index with township. So, but anyways, thank you so much. Looking forward to continuing to build our partnership in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to comment? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to presentations. And we have a presentation this evening from Dexter Community Schools.
How much time do we have?
Absolutely. Generally, we give about 10 minutes for presentations, if that's enough.
Chris, super duper Dexter case, like the upcoming bond proposal. Quick background, Dexter Community School with 84 square miles. You go all the way down to Silo Church Road, up through into Livingston County, we cut through the Jana Lakes. We actually encompass parts of eight townships and all of the city of Dexter, which makes it a fairly complicated boundary and organization. So as a result, we run the community and department. So the recreation opportunities for the community and then our properties, we always have community spaces. For example, we have pickleball courts at Mill Creek. We don't have a pickleball team, but the community is, so we have walking paths, et cetera, throughout the district. We, every eight to 10 years, we go through a process of a long-term facilities plan. And we started that process back about a year ago. And we asked for more community volunteers. We had about 50 volunteers. We had about 31 sound that made everything. And they put together a proposal after we did full analysis of all of our facilities. We have a building indoor square beat and 360 acres. So we did an analysis of expected life of all of our equipment, roofs, et cetera, roofs, parking lots, everything. And put together, the committee went through tunnels, they did a full analysis, and they put together a proposal that they took to the board. Originally, it was like 300 and something million dollars. We're like, ah, no. So we scaled it down within what could be done within the current mileage rate. So we've been at eight and a half mil since the 90s, consistent. And we're in what's called the school by loan fund, which makes us one of the handful of districts that can still stay at the same village rate all the time. Instead of it going up and down every year, it stays steady. The proposal that we have on the May ballot, actually, it maintains the eight and a half mil to 2033 with pretty conservative estimates. It probably will be paid down by 2032, looking at the realistic estimates of property tax values. It's been approved by the Department of Treasury, have to go through, we have all the details. And we can share, we have on our website, a huge FAQ with every question you could ever think of and think of other sentences. We'll answer the question. Craig McCullough here, he's going to talk about some of the details of the proposal.
Yeah, so my name is Craig McCullough. I am principal for operations for Dexter Community Schools. Longtime elementary principal, you may have known me there. My new role right now is principal for operations. So these projects are kind of my, there you go. So, so the project's kind of my wheelhouse. So I just want to touch base. What you have is a bunch of feet that touches on lots of the buildings, but we'll just kind of scope the first one right here, some of the highlights of the bond. To see, have to kind of get a feel and flavor for the bond. There's four focus areas of our bond. It's age-appropriate academic campuses. So how we, I'll stand by it, my mic's better to the camera, there you go. So age-appropriate academic campuses, how we best look at all of our buildings and how they're used for our students and how that works. Infrastructure, safety and security, right? We got to keep the hot water going, the rain out of the inside and take care of that sort of infrastructure. And how do we look at the safety and security of our buildings to upgrade there? The enhanced student experience, right? Dexter's an incredible place. So how do we continue to make sure those learning experiences are there for our students? And then some pieces for arts and athletics and the community as a whole. So some big things, right? One of the main things with the bond is make sure infrastructure is strong, right? There are roads that need to be redone, there's parking lots. I think it's 7,500 windows, 1,500 doors. As Chris likes to say, our students walk through doors, speak first, right? So a lot of those are getting fixed with the lock. So I was principal and anchor for years. The windows need to come out and be done. Both of them can't open. So a lot of those infrastructure things, really keep our buildings, they've done a great job. The Dexter School has had for years of making sure we're using our buildings that we have and keeping them up to speed. Looking at collaboration spaces, so that's kind of the classroom of how it works for our students, right? Our teachers, how do we make those collaboration spaces in our buildings? We're going to upgrades, bathroom upgrades to all of our buildings. There's a bathroom at Creekside that's literally falling into the tunnels. You walk into the Wiley bathrooms and yes, you can tell that in the Wiley bathroom from the 60s. Like they need to be redone and taken care of. Playgrounds, all of our playgrounds, look at all of our playgrounds, we've relived the playgrounds. A big part of the bond is looking at flipping students. So Mill Creek currently is a seven, eight building, five, six, and the Creekside is the old high school. We want to flip those grade levels. So we want to get all of our young five and sixth graders on the east side of Baker Road and then move them. So we'll take Mill Creek, it was built in 95, upgrade it, tweak it for five, six, and then write out for Creekside. One of the big proposals is saving, right now, we get Creekside up to speed to look at what it is, like $37 million. We knock down a good percentage of it, we can rebuild a new building for 45. So it just needs to come down. So we're going to say some of the iconic pieces of Creekside, right? The gym, the front entrance, some people go, I went to Dexter, it's my old high school, right? I'm looking at that part. And then how do we look at it? Band and art rooms, we're going to turn those into career tech ed centers. How does that all? So we're going to rebuild that, those buildings. Again, we're going to put an addition on the Wiley Elementary as well. Right now, it's chopped up, a lot of our classrooms there at Wiley are, we have some thousands, we have some 800, this one's 600. So we share classrooms and also, we're going to add a new wing on and then redo the inside of that to kind of get the classroom spaces, but we're going to make it back for the bowl. We're looking at 60,000 square feet of indoor athletic space. So what that is, is if the bond, when the bond vote happens, we'll come back out of the community, right? Like, well, problems, projects for schools, we'll reach out to our teachers and the community, like, help us design that, right? So what would that 60,000 look like? Is it an individual space? Are there different gyms added on to schools, right? What does that look like?
And as we're up in the gym, it's about 40,000 square feet, so it's, it's a neat one.
Again, upgrades to our outdoor spaces. As far as our athletic spaces, I say we have the nicest chain link fences around, but we could do a little bit more like welcoming into some of our spaces and our fields there. Theater arts, we want to look at when we build a new Creekside school, we're going to put a new three to 400 seat orchestra in there. Really add it and give us another theater back spaces in. Upgrades to the CPA, high school was built no two, it needs new lights, it needs new sound, how do we really take care of our theater arts? Another big one is the music. All of our fifth graders, we want everybody to try an instrument. What we do is if families have to purchase or rent that instrument, right? We know many schools don't. But then what do you do with a $1,500 instrument you just bought? Dexter School, we want to buy instruments for all of our kids. Some top bobs, to let them experience it. Then if they want to go forward with the violin, then you know you can buy one, means better than having them. Safety, security too, so if you haven't been in our high school lately, if you walk in the front door, you can kind of walk wherever you want. So we want to look at that safety, security, really design that to invest people to get in, and how does that look? Also there at the high school, we have a lot of students that are into our lifting program. We just run out of space. We put almost 400 kids through there a day, and there's just not enough room. So part of that is putting a new weight room in front of Dexter High School, really give it a good welcoming feel and weight facility, which then allows us to use the old weight room. That then we can put wrestling and cheer and different programs in there. We're also going to look at adding another career tech ed space at Dexter High School as well. So we started, we have a wood shop, a trades class going right now. We'd love to go and put on space outside, kind of behind the high school, we'll really turn it to a real shop. We can look at doing that for our wood program. Technology upgrades across the district and school buses, we always have to be quick for that for our school. And so quick, some of the bond highlights there. I know we talk buildings, we do have a plan of structure, right? How it's labeled instructor, people like, wait a minute, if you're getting a building, how does that work? We have plans A, B, C, D, E, and F, I think, right now, depending on what we want, how we can move, so we'll have that shift.
We have everything on the FAQ on the website. We also, we do the bonds in a different way than, we do it logically, we save interest for taxpayers. What we do is we sell our bonds in series. So we, when a bond passes, a proposal, we don't sell all $240 million worth of bonds and then wait to spend them down and earn interest that we're paying on. What we do is we do them in series. So this one would have 60 million sold for 2025, a couple of projects that will happen in a two-year span. Another 60 to 70 or so that'll be sold in 2027 for the next two years span. Another 60 to 70 million that'll be sold in 2029 for that two-year span. And then the remainder off through 2033 for those projects. So it is really a 10-year plan that we say it's eight, but it'll take 10 to get it done, because that's just how construction goes and renovations. The buildings, our buildings, we maintain our facilities for the taxpayers, but we have a lot of buildings and they're big and they're, big buildings are expensive. We have 600,000 square foot of roofs. It is $20 million just to replace the roofs every 20 years. So it adds up really quickly. Buses used to be 65,000 to 75,000, another 170,000 or 180,000. It's the cost just increases. We planned in the proposal, all of the projects by year with what an inflationary, reasonable inflationary cost will be. So that we projected all the way to 2033. So that's, thank you for working through the election process, I know I'm there, sorry. We also go, we decided to go in May for a variety of reasons. And we only collect school debt, that mileage taxes in the January or in the winter collection. So if we go in May, we can still start projects. If we go in August, we can still start projects. Go in November, waiting another year before we can start projects. The other thing that happens, the November ballot is usually really well attended if there's something big on it in the even years, odd years, it's, it depends. August is sometimes hard to get information out, we can get voter turnout. May usually has a, unless there's a primary, we don't primary this year. So May, actually, we're able to keep, we're in that normal school rhythm, so we can keep the message out that there is an election. So at least people are aware there's an election. So that's why, man.
Great. Thank you so much for coming in to present its important information for the community. Does the board, does anyone have any questions? Thank you so much. Thanks so much for coming in. All right, we're now moving on in the agenda to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Been moved by Sakinga. Is there a second?
I'll support.
Seconded by clerk Stambu Elise. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Oh, yes.
We still have, we get any phones, nevermind.
Because if you have a discussion, move off the consent.
All right, hearing no further discussion, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. We'll now move into action items. Our first action item is acceptance of the financial transactions. Is there a motion? Everyone's quiet today. I'm sorry.
I can make a motion to approve the financial transactions, but the, but what is on page 13 is the budget variance report. What's on page 16 is the budget variance report, not the transactions.
I'm sorry, what, could you repeat those page numbers again?
Well, the, the, the agenda item is acceptance of financial transactions, but the report is the budget variance report. So there's, I don't know where the financial transactions are.
65.
Page 65.
I don't know why they're stuck like that.
Yeah, sorry about that, I didn't, and I didn't realize they were out of order. Let me, yeah.
Are they? I'm sorry, 67.
67.
All right, so moved by Sakinga, seconded by Nolte. And we'll move into discussion.
I noted and sent to the clerk, and she confirmed that the, that as far as the budget variance is concerned, the road commission, we came in under budget on our local roads last year. So I was, because I asked her, well, did they not bill us? Because if everybody remembers, we approved a supplemental appropriation to pay for additional road services last fiscal year, so that we could reduce the cut. So we could fully use the appropriation. And even with that supplemental appropriation, we didn't, we didn't use the whole amount. So kind of kudos to the road commission and yay, we got more roads picked, so.
And just to, it's not in the report, but just to add to that, that is the case also with our 2026 project, where we just approved the amount. They've, we got the agreement and it is also under the budget that we had expected, so.
And I also noted, because this is the year-end report, you know, this report is the year-end report for the full year. And I was also talking to Michelle about the fact that the property taxes came in a little below what we budgeted, which is at least in part because we had a budget error last year, which was just a continuation of prior year budget error. But, but we more than made up for it with other revenue sources. Although it would be nice to know how our collection rate compares to, what, what we can't tell from this budget variance report because of the budget error is how the collection rate compare, you know, the assessor provides a total amount that's to be billed to the taxpayers and then treasurer collects it. And what I can't tell from this because of the budget error is how our, how's our collection rate for last year? So that was my other kind of budget question. But other than that, the year-end looked great.
Any other discussion on financial transactions?
But, I mean, does the treasurer know? How about, do you know how our collection rate was last year?
So we were at like 98% collected, which is fairly typical. And then the rest of that got turned over to the county. So, you know.
Any other questions? Discussion on the financial transactions? Hearing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. We'll move on to our next action item, which is the review and approval of lawn care maintenance bids. And just to note, I know that the clerk mentioned this in the conflict of interest, that she did declare a conflict of interest here. What you have before you are bids from, I believe it's six, yeah, six different vendors that did send, submit bids. We issued the RFP and contacted, I believe it was 15 individual companies, and we got six bids back. I want to thank Sam Edwards, our office administrator, for collecting all this information, as well as Michelle Fiesel, our office assistant, for helping to reach out to all of those companies to try to get information back. I do want to assure everyone, given that the conflict of interest was declared, that all of these bids were kept separate. None of them were stored on even the township servers that were accessible. So the only folks who had access to them before they were put in the agenda was Sam Edwards. And then the day that we did the agenda, I received access to review the information before it was put out publicly. So there was no other access to any of the bids ahead of time. For this process, we have included the original RFP, that's what you see on page 26 and 27. And then we, Sam put together, after she and I discussed it, a chart. Because as you can see, we included the actual bids themselves. You can tell every business does this differently. And so to try to make it easier for the board to review, I asked Sam to take the information from those bids and try to extrapolate it into a chart that allowed us to compare apples to apples. So even if a bid said that it was $180 per snow push, for example, you'll see here, we did 12 snow pushes as the example for every one. In case some of the, because some of the businesses actually bid on them as like a seasonal cost. So for winter, it's $10,000, not a, not a per push cost. So we tried to lay that out in this chart here, so that everyone could review all of that information and in a way that, that made sense without having to go through every individual bid yourself. So I think I will, I will stop there with the explanation and we will turn into, or turn it over to discussion. Oh, one other thing, sorry. Page 33 is also the evaluation criteria that we listed in the RFP. So that, those are the ways that we said we would be evaluating. Now we'll turn it over to discussion.
Was there a difference based on these, you know, with these evaluation criteria? I can see where the cost difference is, but was there a, was there a quality difference based on the evaluation criteria?
We, we didn't individually score those, because I think these are sort of, that, that would be from the board reviewing the individual bids. A lot of them are, you know, it, this is what we listed as how we would score it, but there was no scoring metric listed. That, that was a set sort of diagram for everyone. So I felt they were a little arbitrary is not the correct word, but individualized for each person after you review those proposals. We just wanted to make sure we included what that criteria was.
And we split the bids, can we, you know, so if, you know, like the historic cemetery is, you know, working in and around historic markers is one of the criteria. So let's just imagine that the lowest bidder or a low bidder doesn't have experience with cemeteries and the high bidder has lots of great experience with cemeteries. Could we go with one with a low bidder for everything except the cemeteries?
I think we would have to, we would have to go back to the companies and ask that. I think that's certainly, you know, in the past, we have done that. We, we did ask everyone to bid with their pricing sort of individualized for those pieces. I don't know what that would do for the pricing. If you didn't get the full, you know, if you didn't get the full contract for all of it, are you interested in just doing the, the snow maintenance? I think we, we certainly can go back and ask the companies that, but I don't know that we can assume that any of them would say yes.
I was just asking parameters.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think we, that's perfectly within what we could decide to do. We would just have to then have that discussion with them and bring it back to the board. Other questions or discussion? Trustee Nolte.
I still think issue with weed whacking in the cemetery. And I know this says we want to do no chemicals. And I thought it would actually, we need to dramatically reduce our chemicals. I am not pro-weed-whacking in our cemetery. I am about trying to protect that stones and the best thing you can do is leave that. That bit, we won't even go there to find those volunteers. But it's a concern of mine. I mean, I've spent three years rebuilding headstones and I hardly need anybody going in there and hitting one or continuing to blow over what's down that we haven't gotten back up. I mean, there are certain things there. And I see, I see where it says, we'll take care. But to me, on a weekly, let's take 20 minutes and blow through Hudson Hills Cemetery and get it knocked down, doesn't facilitate care for the rest of the revenue. So I'm still pushing not to weed whack in our cemetery.
Okay. Further discussion?
How would we ensure that?
Well, if we don't weed whack.
Yeah.
Well, you can tell when a lot of weed whacking happens, just by digging in the grass. And you can see it on some stones, a hidden stone. And I can definitely tell when you've been a bit moved over now, you know, or what we're trying to finish up, and it'll show. But then you can disallow weed whacking on the headstone. You can weed whack around the fence lines, you can weed back the, you know, keep taking, not the overgrowth back, but.
So you want chemicals by this stuff?
Let me spray it on the ground, not on the stones.
Can I participate in discussion?
Yeah.
While I understand your perspective with not wanting to spray chemicals around the stones, I am very anti-chemicals. I believe any of these companies, I am not advocating for any one of them, are able to stay four or five inches away from the headstones. My concern, not just that I'm anti-herbicides, but when you kill the lawn next to these stones, that's a big reason why. I mean, you're, you're allowing your runoff, undermining under the stones. You need some sort of vegetation to stay, to keep them solid and upright. Also, with this board being, you know, environmental stewardship, we care about our waterways, we care about our ground, it's toxic. I, I think there's other means to take care of the stones. And you, we have, we have a great board, we have volunteers. Once a month, if you get a little bit of grass that grows up around these stones, then we, we go and we take care of it. I will also say that a big issue with the damage on stones that I've seen myself, not just because I've been in that cemetery, but because I put the flags up and I go and put the flags on our military as well, is when a mower gets too close to these stones to try and prevent having to do so much weed whipping, they will scrape their deck, pretty much of that mower along the stones. And that is what is the most concerned to me. There's also acid in Roundup, which will also decompose prematurely the mortar of those stones. So while I understand your, your perspective, if a little grass grows around it, I would say so be it. And if it gets unsightly, we can just take a crew out there. I mean, this board is full. I mean, this board is full of volunteers, our community is full of volunteers. I think you did a beautiful job on the cemetery, driving by it and seeing glowing. I mean, it's gorgeous. It truly is. And I have the utmost respect that, that our board, especially with trustee Nolte's initiative. You know, starting that project. So I understand your concern. Another thing, when it comes to a weed whipper, there is a guard. That goes around it. So that will keep you away from getting to those stones, but absolutely there are companies that are so meticulous, they'll. Weed whip along those stones, but the majority of that damage more or less happened with people not necessarily wanting, it takes time to weed whip. And they try and get very close to those stones and when those mowers get close. They can brush their deck against that and do damage on them. I just, I just wanted to put that out there that I understand your perspective on, on a weed killer. But.
Say about, and I'd have to go look it back up and show you. That's. How long ago I wrote the old supervisor's memo on chemicals that aren't as. Toxic as Roundup or anything that a, a general landscaper will use, but is still not as damaging to a headstone. And not to use any natural. Vinegar based products because that really destroys granite and stones. So I did put a memo together making a recommendation that possibly the township buy the chemical. And give it to the landscaper when they need to be sprayed. So it's not as toxic as a Roundup, but still keeps us. And as far as being worried about digging, every stone that we reset, we reset with pea gravel. So the drainage is happening. We reset with. So much pea gravel, then we put our stone back in so it has, the water can wick away and it doesn't do a lot of this. So anything we've reset is reset on stone mix, on pea gravel. I'm sure I still have bags over there waiting for the next project. So that is happening. So I don't really worry about water as much now on anything we've reset. Which is a lot of big pieces.
So are these bids all based on weed whipping and not weed working and not, and not chemical use?
We essentially asked, and that's why. We. We. We didn't specify in here. So. Each company had the ability to tell us how they would perform the tasks. And that's number six was just description of how vendor will meet the needs outlined in the scope of work. And the, the cemeteries were a separate scope of work.
Not every week.
It isn't necessary.
I mean, they could be mowed a lot less and it would be healthier for our stones. It would be healthier. It's. I almost think it's more important that we, we have spent a lot of money knocking back the overbrush. And we have found winning stones in that overbrush and not to let that come back. And keep this clean fence to fence. Well, we can't keep that back clean. But I, I would reduce, me personally, I would reduce the number of mows. And that's going to reduce some of the wear and tear on our stones.
I feel like we're getting into the weeds a little bit. I mean, yeah.
Literally and figures.
What we're doing now is selecting a contractor, not making decisions about, about, about the specific operational aspects.
Trustee Sanders.
Have we discussed, even though this, I, I agree with trustee Sakinga, but have we? Discussed this with our current. Vendor that, with our current company that does the. Where the Salisbury company?
Salisbury does his cemeteries and that's not. And KB Services works doing these cemeteries and he does not, he does not wish to participate or work for the town.
But they did bid on Salisbury.
Salisbury would do it.
Salisbury has been doing the other, yes.
I see, but they have not been involved in it. Okay.
They have not been involved yet.
Okay.
So either way, it'll be a new vendor for the cemeteries.
And the last board. Had a policy of no, no chemicals sprays because we had a strategic plan. And one of the elements of the strategic plan was protection of the waterways, environmental stewardship and all that. That strategic plan is expired. This board has not made a policy decision on, on anything really. We don't have a strategic plan or any kind of. Context for sprays, no sprays, I assume because we're largely the same, you know. Majority, same membership. We may approve that again as a policy, but it's not a policy that's in place right now. So, so I, I don't know if we just make the decision based on price at this point.
Or you could make the decision based on if there is a more. Non-dangerous and toxic chemical that the township would provide to anyone of these companies. It probably is.
It's expensive for gas. But I mean, it's, you can't expect the landscape to provide that.
I'm not talking about a decision on chemical. I'm just talking about the decision on the agenda, which is what contractor are we going to select? If we go with the lowest cost, which is Stambulaus Landscaping, that's $20,000. That's less than we, you know, than by at least $5,000, which would provide a lot of. I don't remember what the budget is because we don't have the fiscal. 26 budget in our packet right now, but I assume that that would leave room in the budget for. The purchase of expensive eco-friendly chemicals. Or whatever. So if we go with the lowest price vendor, then we would have room in the budget. For more nuanced treatments in the cemetery. So I'm going to make a motion that we go with, with the lowest price vendors.
Well, we've got a motion first. Is there a second? Okay. So I, I don't hear a second for the motion. We'll go back into discussion. Trustee Nolte.
Everybody knows how I feel about this and it's nothing against the company, has nothing to do with that. But it's too close to home and it's inviting more relationships into our house. Family relationships into our home here in the township. And again, it has nothing to do with the companies. It is strictly to me a policy issue. That we work to keep the, the clean. It's like, I don't believe in muddling our water internally with these relationships. And I'm very vocal about that. And it seems to me this is the same way. I'm not worried about the bid, that hasn't to, anything to do with it, but there are ramifications that happen. That if something goes wrong, there has to be, you know, a complaint process. It just. Makes the system messier. And so I would not vote for that, even though they are the lowest bidder. I appreciate the price. I would reduce the mowing in the cemetery and use that extra money to buy a friendlier chemical to handle our headstones or whatever. The other thing on weed whacking is how many professional lawn whippers remove their guards from their weed whackers so they can mow faster. But that's a whole nother.
That's operating.
I'd love to talk to any lawn series about my cemetery project. It would be passion. But that's how I feel about that. I don't think we should. In our waters.
Other discussion?
How does our, did you, did anyone pull up our nepotism policy to see whether this is a violation of our, of our policy?
I don't, I, I don't believe that it would be because the nepotism policy would cover, this is just my opinion. I did not pull it separately for this meeting. But the nepotism policy covers employees. And those interactions, I think. We, the.
I think we have board nepotism clause in the board rules for the board.
Yes. And that's, to me, that's the, the, the conflict of interest portion. I don't, I don't know that there, we can, we can certainly. Take a recess and I can go find it and we can review it if folks would like to. I don't mind doing that. I didn't, I didn't bring it for this.
I'm sure.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. But I, would the board, would the board like us to pull it so that we have it in front of us or our folk, would folks? Rather continue on with discussion?
I, I just think that if we don't go with the lowest price bidder. We, we could be vulnerable to a complaint unless we have a policy in place. I, I think that's, you know, and I, I think that it probably is. I don't know what, what.
All our feeds save don't have treatment.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's pretty standard language that the attorney approves for any RFP and it's. The Dexter Township reserves the right to accept or reject any or all proposals. Is the line that I know Sarah has, has had us include. I mean, again, I, if, if folks want, we can, we can pause and pull the policy or we can, we can continue discussion. I'm fine either way. But I, I don't share the same sort of liability concern, Karen, just because of the, the language of the RFP.
So another approach.
Trustee Sanders.
I really appreciate the clerk. You know, acknowledging a possible conflict of interest and abstaining. I have a lot of respect for that. I also appreciate the. Bid. And also trust that this, their company would do a, a great job. That being said, I just have to hold firm to the, I just need to be consistent with what I think is a conflict of interest in the. In the township. Where we already have. This family working for us together, another family working for us together, and this adds more. To it. And I want to hold, sometimes principles are more costly. And I feel like this is a conflict of interest. And a potential conflict of interest and that it might cost us more to go with a different company. But I feel that we should, based on that. Based on my strong. Belief that we need to avoid that at all costs, when we can, when we can. These are not elected positions. So.
Well, another approach then, then I would make a motion that we select Salisbury Landscaping Group, which is our current, which is the second lowest bidder. And it's our current provider and they've been doing a good job for us.
Well, I would like to ask a question about that because Salisbury.
Hold on, we gotta, we have a motion first. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. So the, the motion by trustee Sakinga is to accept the bid from Salisbury Landscape Group. And it's been seconded by trustee Sanders. Now we'll move into discussion. Trustee Abbott.
So. Three of these. Companies didn't even list the snow depth that they would plow at. So do we, and Salisbury is one of them. I looked through their paperwork and they don't say two inches, they don't say one and a half. Great Outdoors, they're the most expensive. They'll snow plow at one and a half inches. However, they have verbiage on page 34 of your packet that indicates that they can raise the price at any time throughout the contract. That if cost increase, our costs will increase. So basically you've got Stambulaus at two inches depth and they're at 20,050. $20,050. And then Nash, who's also two inches depth and they're at 30,500. I think when the other three, I feel like they didn't tell us, like, do we know? When they'll plow? I'm, I'm beyond the lawn thing at this point.
I think we can direct, if they didn't tell us, then we can direct them.
Yeah, I think, I think that is something that would be in the contract. If I, if I remember correctly, and I'd have to go back and pull their contract. I think this year it was one and a, one and a half. Inches. If, I will say, just being very transparent, we did have to call them. They, we went over budget. This year, partially in the snow removal category. They are very attentive, very quick to be there, but we did have to ask them to stop salting and pushing as much. Because it seemed very. Excessive. And, and frankly, with the salt. It was too much salt. And that, just to your point about the price increases. We did receive from Salisbury at the end of the season a substantial increase in salt cost. Because of the cost increase in salt that was passed along to us. So just making sure that everyone sort of, you know, that it's, that we're being transparent about. What those, what those things were.
Also, when it comes to having knowledge about snow is a big deal too, and knowing how much you can charge a company. When the customer has an idea when it comes to snow. The salt. Got unproportionally very expensive because you want to push that snow off of the parking lot. You don't just want to come and salt the parking lot. Because a couple of hours later, you're going to have to come and salt it again because it freezes, it becomes dangerous. So that's why the excessive salt charges were occurring.
And I will say, and folks can correct me if I'm wrong, they did correct, I, like we, you know, they did eventually correct it, but anyone who came in the winter. We tracked salt all through the building for a little while before we got it hammered out. And we did have to pay. We had to pay for the repair. You'll see in your packet, I believe, it might be next month. We, I think we just paid it actually, but. We had to have a repair service out for the, the handicap entrance on the door because the salt actually ate the wires. And that's why the handicap button on the door wouldn't work. So.
Talk about chemicals.
Yes. So chemicals are corrosive as we. But I just want to be transparent about that, about those, those items. But I do believe trustee Abbott, that, that we in the contract set that depth. Other discussion? Okay. Hearing no other discussion, there is a, there is a motion before the board. To move forward with the Salisbury Landscaping bid. We will do a roll call vote since this has to do with expenditures. Trustee Sakinga.
Uh, yes.
Trustee Sanders.
Yes.
Treasurer Metz.
Yes.
Trustee Abbott.
Yes.
Trustee Nolte. Supervisor Scott, yes. So we'll move forward with the Salisbury Landscaping Group bid. I do want to thank, as we close out that issue and, and to include in our minutes, thank all of the businesses that responded to the RFP. We asked for a lot of information and I was actually really impressed that we got six full, very complete bids for the services. We'll now move on to item C, which is the hearing officer approval. Later, when we get to reports, you'll hear a report from our director of planning and zoning and it's written, well, you might not hear, I don't know. It's written in the packet. We had a complaint about a dangerous building that surfaced this week. The reason that I'm asking for this approval here is we have not yet identified the individual to be. The hearing officer. But I didn't want to, to have to call a special meeting or wait an additional month to be able to do that. The process for a dangerous building and having that remedied can already take 60, 90 plus days. And this is a situation we want to remedy as quickly as possible. So just asking for this approval. Under Township Ordinance 36, the supervisor must appoint a hearing officer as our first step. State statute governs the qualifications of that person. They have to have knowledge of building and construction. There is a list of, of qualifications. They should not be connected to the township already, so we can't use current members of our planning commission or our zoning board of appeals. And so I'm working through that process now to find someone that fits that description and, and to be able to appoint them. So this is just a request for that approval from. So this is just a request for that approval from the board so that we can expedite that process once someone's been identified. Sarah Motion? Trustee Sakinga.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So isn't there, wasn't, isn't there a contractor that always deals with these abandoned building complaints? That, that like, it's just, it's the same organization that Carlisle Warman uses in a bunch of jurisdictions? Always to deal with abandoned buildings?
Carlisle Warman mentioned that their building department could, could potentially do it, but we would have to pay contractor rates. And so for this, they may be involved, depending on how this whole process goes, they may be involved. The Chelsea Area Construction Agency may be involved. There may be, it's.
I'm not talking about Carlisle Warman. I'm talking about a, a, a different organization that handles, that handles abandoned buildings for the most of the municipalities.
You might be referring to Belfour. They restore properties and secure them so they're safe. With this building in particular, I don't think Belfour would be the appropriate contractor for this. The building is accessible from every angle. It's not as simple as putting a padlock on a front door and securing windows.
Yeah, it's, it's beyond being able to just secure it in that way, we believe.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the supervisor naming a hearing officer for the purpose of dealing with a dangerous building. What is the building?
Yeah. There's a, there's a motion. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Abbott. Now discussion. Any other questions or discussion? I just want to also thank Deputy Clerk Samuelli and our Director of Planning and Zoning for going out to the site and checking it out right away to help keep the, the residents safe and to the resident who brought it to our attention. As you all know, we are reactive in our, in our ordinance enforcement. And so very thankful after seeing or hearing some of the issues out there that, what, that they brought it forward for us to deal with. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. We'll now move into the discussion items portion of our agenda. And an update on single hauler RFP process with trustee Nolte.
These, these have no meaning other than mine, but. I had hoped in the month of April to have a full packet with the recommendation and everywhere we're going. But in our conversation with the companies, we still have a few key points that are very particular to the contracts. And those are not ironed out yet. So they're not comfortable making a recommendation or sharing all the information. But I would like to take this time, if anybody's listening out there, and I, I will type it in the loop, that there's a lot of misinformation out on the website and Facebook sites. A, a decision has not been made. There will be town halls before we make the final decision. It will be announced in, in the loop and other media when it does come to be. There's just a lot of talk out there that's incorrect. And we are not making any moves. Hopefully next month, we'll be able to come with our recommendation. We'll get our answers. I'm hoping it would come in today, but it didn't. And so we just have to make sure it's out of our eyes and across our team before we go public with such a big project where we are. But it's moving along fairly well. It's just, it's just a big, a lot of questions and a lot of answers to get before we.
Any questions?
Thank you, Karen's joining us in helping make the decision and ask the question. And we had six bidders, right? I mean.
Four.
Four bidders.
Yeah, we had four bidders. We've announced the four bidders.
Yeah. So we had, we had four bidders and the bids were, were good. So, so we. It's on track. It's just, it's just taking us, it's, it's so complicated. It's taking us more time to assess.
Make sure we get all the proper services for our residents.
But I think what we have in mind for public engagement is that we come to the board next month with our recommendations based on our assessment of the RFP. Then, once we get the board to endorse one of the bidders, then we do a coffee chat or a couple of coffee chats where we hear from people what their perspect, you know, before we actually contract with somebody, we'll, we'll engage the public again.
Make sure we cover all the points.
And know all their questions. And then we'll do, we can also do a town hall style, which is a little more formal than, than a coffee chat where we present information and then we'll do the contract.
There, there is good news that if, like, and I always use this word if, because if the details don't work out, we don't move forward. If it doesn't work out for the residents and it doesn't work out in a positive manner, then we just don't do it right now. It's pretty, you know, cut and dry, but there's a lot of discrepancies within that. But the good news is the vendors, I thought it would be a three-month implementation in my head. They're thinking more of six months. So by the time we make the decision, it's six months until we go full active, which is great for our HOAs that have existing contracts. It's great for us to give this time to educate because we've got 1,500, 2,800 homes to reach. So I like having that six-month window longer. They need more time, so that's.
Any other questions or discussion?
There's a lot of misinformation that's out there that popped. And people say we're driving this out of our own self-interest. And I think a little of the history has to be known on this project. It was addressed in the 2023 master plan where it was giving, it was given a high rating to move forward. In early 2024, we had a small coffee chat, let's talk trash. It was given a high rating. And early 24, we produced the survey that had 80%, 80% support. 72% said they would enroll in the program and it broke down the levels of what they wanted. And it also gave us a dollar range of what our residents were paying. So this by no means has come out of the blue that we've said we need this for our township. It has been multiple years that we've been looking at it and working on all the details. So.
And I believe it was discussed, I mean, to that point. When I, when I first met with the former supervisor, actually several former supervisors ago with Harley, he mentioned that he actually had a draft RFP and it was on the township system. So I, I think that this was even a discussion item for years before this board really started moving things forward.
But I think what made, there were two things that made us, that catalyzed us to move forward. One was a lot of people in the township got dropped by their provider. So a lot of people were without service and were asking us for help. And we can't help when it's totally decentralized, when it's a totally decentralized system. And then the other is this very high level of financial investment that we've made in the local roads and our understanding from the local roads committee that garbage trucks are very, very, very heavy. And, and I think it's one garbage truck is equivalent of 1,000 daily users, if I remember that. I'm looking at Lisa because I think that's the number they gave us. Yeah. So, I mean, that's our highest use roads, you know? So, so if we've got five different providers, that's the equivalent of 5,000 cars on, on those roads. And we've spent a lot of money. Yeah. So, so I don't know what the self-interest.
Trustee Sanders. Trustee Sanders.
I just want to say that I feel really grateful for all the work that's been done on it over the years. And now it's such an important program. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll move into our Q and A staff and Dexter Township Committee reports. Is there anyone who would like to speak to their report?
All right. So on page 80, I think I need the readers, this sucks. On page 88, you know, right? Under my Western Washington Recycling Authority report summary, the third column from, or the third paragraph from the bottom, you had a newly elected, appointed by her board member. So she wasn't necessarily appointed to the WWRA and she is not a voting member, but she is a representative from Bridgewater. I just wanted to clarify that.
Why is she a voting member?
Sure. You've been there for so long. There's a coalition of, oh, there's a coalition of five municipalities that are.
Five municipalities that set up WWRA 30 years ago. That is the board. Anybody else that comes in, they pay a fee and have their green bins, green bin pickup. But they cannot be part of that.
So far.
They're associated members.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, they can speak to the board. They can bring reports from their community. Do you know the five?
Of course. Um, so there is Lima. Pardon? Chelsea, Lima. Chester Township, Dexter Township, Lima.
And Linda.
Six.
Oh, this is.
Lima was mentioned twice.
Oh.
This is off of that. Yeah.
Okay.
I just have a question about, so I, I wondered on G and H that says open space committee, Marty and Barry, and then FOS board, do we have an open space committee that's separate from the FOS board?
No, it's just we give them each, usually Barry submits a report.
Oh, I see.
But then Michelle reports on those because that's where.
Because of.
Because she's on both for the board. Yes.
Okay. I just wondered about that.
I don't know why we named them two different things on the agenda. I'll, I'll correct that for, yeah, I'll correct that for.
Just for clarity.
For next time. Yes. Thank you, Laura.
And the board was, or the meeting was canceled last month. And Martin Ruley did have a conversation with Barry, so they both agreed to cancel.
Do you know why?
There was no new information and of course, as you know, they're dealing with, with a couple of properties that have been challenging.
Challenging. Okay. And, and we're still looking for a new person.
Correct. And that's in my report too.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, I saw that.
I would like to say something about fire. Well, two things. One is I just wanted the board to be aware that the DAFD board is requesting that, that each participating municipality appoint a couple of people to be on a, on a committee to discuss the interlocal agreement. So we will probably just have that on the consent agenda next month. Or, or it'll be a discussion item next month or something, you know? But, but by, by, not this month, but next month, we, we hope to come to you guys for appointees to this separate committee. And because the interlocal is, it's kind of separate from the DAFD as a kind of operating board over the, over the operations of DAFD, but this is different. This is about the interlocal agreement that establishes DAFD. The other thing is, and I emailed you, the executive team about this, if you look at the year-end financial report, you will see that fire revenues and expenses were close to imbalance. There was a, a small surplus. But DAFD's expenses are going up significantly, partly because of the collective bargaining agreement, which is raising firefighter salaries by about 50% over three years. So, and then the other thing is the DAFD board made a policy decision that all three stations should be covered 24/7, which means more firefighters. So we added three firefighters to the roster this year. And so what that means is that the fire fund, the millage, is not going to be enough to cover the cost of, of our, of, it's not going to, it's not going to cover the full cost. So I would like for us to go back to the voters. Or I suggest as a, so this board needs to make a policy decision about that. And my, one of the suggestions I had is that we go back to the voters and ask them for a public safety millage, cost neutral with the police and fire to give us flexibility to allocate funds however we see fit and public safety. Okay? And that would be cost neutral. If we don't go that route, then we're going to need to come up with more, with probably general fund dollars to supplement fire.
Are you looking at that for this year or next year?
Well.
Do we have enough money to run it for the year?
I.
No, I'm just surmising.
I, so our, our, we have fund balances in the fire fund that were sufficient to carry us through the term of that millage, which is five years. Got approved last year, so there's, you know, four years remaining. So, so we don't have to be in a hurry. But these, but it takes a long time, as Michelle can tell you, to do a millage. So I don't want it to be a last minute. And I would love if we could like have it as a future agenda item or something like, can we make the, like a policy decision about how we want to proceed on that? And then if we do decide that we want to go to the voters for a public safety millage, then who, how, how's that going to work? You know, have a, have a, have a plan in place for how we're going to get that done.
And I, I think to that, to that point, and we, we certainly can discuss it at a later meeting and get it on the agenda. I think part of the discussion around the interlocal, at, at least that I want to see us have a discussion about too, is whether or not DAFD should be its own authority, for one thing. Where, right now, the funding mechanism with being run-based is antiquated. And, and I don't, it, it really isn't great. So I think we have to figure that piece out as well. I also, I am slightly concerned, and I, I don't want to get into it too much here because we need more data and more information. But I'm slightly concerned that, that our costs for police services may rise as well. And the last thing I want to do is go, have to go to the voters twice with those rates. So I, I want to get more of an understanding around some of the police service concerns. I mean, they were brought to us at a meeting with those of us who, who do the contract services just recently. So there's still a lot of information still to gather and there was no real information provided by the sheriff's office just to say that right now they're, you know, they seem a little unsure about the budget. So I think having it as a future discussion item and knowing that we have a set amount of time to do that. But, but just so that, you know, I know Karen said it, but just to, to put a fine point on it. We do have fire fund reserves, which is when we made the decision to do only a renewal, we planned for spending those down as a part of this. So it, nothing has happened that is causing us to, to do anything other than what we already have planned. It's just that we want to be prepared for the years moving forward.
And, and we spent less this year than I originally forecasted we would spend. So our, so there was going to be a tiny deficit in year five, like $10,000, but that, I don't. I think we're in, we're in fine shape. It's not urgent. Just don't want. I just want us to be conscious that it's a big decision we have to make.
Other reports, I want to go to Fletcher if he has anything to report. But I also want to say thank you and make sure that the board sees that there was a question asked at our board meeting last time around Hillside Acres. And Fletcher came to me and said, I did all of this research. It's 177 pages. Would you like the whole thing in the packet or just, or just four? And I said, let's just do four. So you all received, you, you got it. You got it as an email that was supplemental, but I just want to say thank you to Fletcher for, for being very thorough and give him the opportunity to talk about anything that's in his report.
Good evening, everyone. I'll go quickly through the Director of Planning and Zoning report, going over permits during. going over permits during the month of March, zoning board of appeals and PC items. An update on the Consumers Energy Dexter Gate project on a north territorial road. They submitted a revised site plan, meeting the conditions outlined in the conditional approval granted in that administrative site plan review. The stop work order was lifted and Consumers Energy plans on having this work done by the end of April. I'm sure everyone here is wanting to see the yellow, orange construction fences taken down and replaced with a nice final fence. Yes, it'll block the pipes, and there's also landscaping being planted for additional screening.
It, it will block the pipes from the sides. It's better, federal, federal requirements, you have to, you have to be able to see a pipeline for security purposes from the front, which is part of the issue that we have. So it, but it will be a much nicer fence than a chain link fence, but you'll still be able to see it because that's part of the federal requirements.
But it's pleasant for the neighbors.
Yes, it should solve the issue that, from the neighbors who were concerned.
Yeah, with the blocking from the side especially. There's a house right next door.
Yes.
We have two CBA requests going to the May meeting. I had to reschedule that meeting for May 13th due to a special election on the 6th. We do have a quorum available and a public notice was sent out indicating that meeting change. The requests include a home addition encroaching in a front yard setback and a fence being erected in a water body yard. Moving on to the Hillside Acres project, as of March 2025, there's been eight single-family zoning permit applications received and issued. All the plans need to receive, or all the permits need to receive approval from CACA before construction can begin. I spoke with the general contractor for Hillside Acres, and they anticipate 10 additional permits being pulled this construction season. Correct. In other news, the Cornman Farm Site Plan, we had reached out to them regarding their status and proceeding with a pre-construction meeting for the construction of a pavilion. They indicated that they do not intend to move forward with that plan and will let their site plan approval lapse. We're hoping, I hope that they come back and reignite that site plan. Lastly, Hudson Mills Metro Park approached the township with a pickleball court plan. They intend to build eight pickleball courts with fencing, benches, shade structures, and a concrete walkway. This site improvement will be near the activity center, and the walkway will connect to the pavilion with the grilling stations nearby. We have a planning commission meeting next week, April 22nd. There'll be two public hearings to review an amendment to change the keeping of animals requirements as well as changing requirements for contiguous non-conforming lots. As of March 2025, we had 14 permits come through our office. I anticipate that increasing with the warmer months ahead. Then there's a handful of enforcements. There is a complaint on Ridgemont about a watercraft storage violation. A follow-up letter has been sent to the property owner, and there will be a follow-up inspection occurring on April 30th to ensure compliance. If there isn't compliance reached by then, we may have to ticket the resident. Moving on to the abandoned structure conversation, I know Lonnie had brought this up earlier. A resident located at 1438 North Lake Road came into the office and let the planning department know that there is an abandoned structure behind his home. This structure is located off of a shared driveway used by three properties off of North Lake Road. Upon receiving that complaint, I drove out to the property to inspect it, and the resident was correct that this building does seem to meet the criteria of a dangerous building. I noted there's structural hazards. There's sections of flooring and walls caving in to the house and into the foundation. The house is open to trespass. There's no doors or windows, and there's holes throughout the structure. You know, kids or people could possibly walk into there, and it's, it's certainly not safe to do so. And then there's also blight and nuisance conditions around the property. There's trailers and junk and debris around the site that seem to have not moved in quite a while. Does the board have any questions about that memo in particular?
Okay.
No, not that, but can we go back to the Hillside Acres for a minute?
Sure.
I just, I'm sure this is obvious, but, so all the, the homes that are going up now, they have all been approved by the CACA board?
That's correct.
Or construction?
Okay. Yes, any home that you see being built or materials sitting outside of a lot, those have all received building permits from CACA as well as a zoning permit from the township.
Okay.
Nothing to do with... When there's so many people Sunday, is that people buying the perimeter for their backyard facing major roads? Does anybody notice that?
That is an excellent question. I could, could reach out to the GC.
I have a question. It just goes back to the abandoned structure.
Sure.
Is it possible that, is, is there a way that we cannot list the person who came in? Because this packet's public, and I just think that when somebody comes in to, you know, let you know that there's something that you should be looking at, I guess I feel like we shouldn't just out them to the public. And so maybe, I don't know if that's a...
We, they can request anonymity. If they file an official report, which for this one they did, there's no, all of that is a public record.
Okay, I understand you can use the Freedom of Information Act to get that, but maybe, but it doesn't mean that we have to voluntarily put it out there. That's all I'm asking about.
Sure.
I agree.
Yeah, noted, thank you, thank you. Lastly, I put a report together regarding Hillside Acres. I know there were some concerns from board members about the progress of the sub and some potential issues over there. Going through the previous approvals, the development agreement, as well as the site plan, I have not found anything out of the ordinary during my inspections over there. One of the specific concerns was the, the size of these homes. And I, I do agree that some of the homes are quite large, but the size is limited to the lot size and the setbacks of the zoning district as well as the height requirements. I did list in the report the square footage of all of the house permits already issued. You can see that they vary quite a bit. There's a few, there's a ranch close to the road that you may notice that is quite smaller than all the others, but most of them seem to be two stories and over 2,000 square feet.
So are they on track to foot 48? I thought it was 48 homes on that?
You're correct, 48 homes were approved for this project. This construction season, they're not going to hit 48 homes. It's...
Yeah, but they can just keep going until they hit 48.
Correct, 48 is the cap. And this year, they're projected to have 18 homes built.
Wasn't 48 the five-year plan? Wasn't that their five-year?
I don't know, but I can't even imagine 48 fitting, of those huge homes fitting on there, 48.
Yeah.
This isn't included in my report, but there is some soil erosion concerns on the site during my onsite inspection. I've been in contact with CACA to get the silt fences fixed and the roads swept, and I will follow up on that until it's completed.
Thank you for doing all this research and for coming and talking us through all these...
Of course. If the board needs any, anything, just, I'm an email or a phone call away. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you, Fletcher. Anyone else want to speak to their reports?
Can I just say one other thing about DAFD that I forgot? Which is just on page 90 of the package is a, is this dashboard. We're trying to develop, the, DAFD is trying to develop a dashboard to communicate in a more succinct way with the participating, with you guys, basically. And so all three of the participating boards are getting the same info. So if you guys just would, wouldn't mind taking a look at that and giving me feedback or Lonnie feedback about, about it? If there's anything else you'd like to see or like about it or whatever. Not right now, but...
Thank you. We also, I noted in my report that DAFD, we have, we've removed the specific addresses from the call reports. In all of our previous packets, it used to list the actual locations where the calls went to, and we've removed that for privacy for the residents. All right, we'll move into data and performance metrics. We have our fire department run report as well as the sheriff department report. The sheriff's department's report was after the packets came, so it came as supplemental material for you all. And we're down to our call for public comment on non-agenda items.
Marty?
Marty?
All right. Any other issues, comments, and concerns of board members or staff? Clerk Samuel Valley.
So just really quick, I, it wasn't a board report, so I thought I'd wait until this area to just give a brief informational that I did go and attend the older person's millage that was held at the Chelsea Singer Center last week. Learned a lot. Jason Machewski gave a fantastic presentation. Thoughts he had was he definitely didn't want it to be ran as a bureaucracy, which was very exciting to hear because while they are anticipating $11.5 million for the year, very quickly you can have a staff of 20-plus people, and a lot of that funding that should go to the singer centers end up getting wound up in, in the bureaucracy part of it. He did describe how the funds plan to be distributed. What they're anticipating is, is around seven, I believe, seven, maybe eight, but for sure, seven singer centers that will be awarded $200,000 right away. They're hoping by summertime to be able to start dispersing these funds where the additional money that is left over, singer centers will be able to petition for granting for services.
Is that 200,000 per senior center or divided amongst the senior center? 2,000, oh, that's a lot.
But there's $11.5 million for the year. So they all will get that initial funding, but there are other singer centers that struggle much more than others. So with the remaining funds, they're able to ask for additional granting for Meals on Wheels, exercise programs, health minus, things of that nature. Transportation came up, so now I, after going to the summit, I realized how important WAVE is. But for WAVE, of course, to be successful, hopefully someone is interested in serving as a board representative. There are a lot of singers that isolate, that don't have that transportation. They canceled doctor's appointments because they don't have a ride or they have no way to get there. So very important that, that someone joins the wave. So other than that, that was about it. Like I said, it was very, very well done. And they're working on finding a director for the aging process to have a staff. They're looking at possibly five to seven people staffing it. Call center phones will actually be answered by an individual, then they'll be directed to the services that they need. Just wanted to give an update on that.
Thank you, and thank you for going.
Yeah.
Trustee Sanders?
We have set a date for our community conversation on immigration issues for June 10th, Tuesday evening. Really kind of like a chat, you know, a community discussion at 6 o'clock.
Here?
Yes.
Great. Trustee Sakanga?
I was wondering if you guys, if the executive team could give us a report on what's happening with BSNA? And in particular, I mean, not now, but like at a future, just a request for a future, like report or discussion item. Just, I'm curious whether we're gonna get online payments and the kiosk and all those things that we're talking about, just because it's a big budget item.
Very, very timely because the executives meeting with them next Monday.
Perfect.
So we'll have information for the next, next month's meeting. Treasure Metz? Trustee Abbott?
I'm all set.
Trustee Nolte?
All set.
All right, I have two quick things. One is I just got an email and a text today from John Scharf from Webster Township. They are moving forward with a large number of road repairs. One of those items is a road that has .67 shared miles with Dexter Township on Huron River Drive. And they are requesting that we split the, the small amount of that cost 50/50. Apparently, when they did the other portion of Huron River Drive, they did that for our, for us during our first set. So I just got the information today. I wanted to mention it here because it'll be in our packet next month. The total cost for that is somewhere around $17,000. I still need to get the rest of the information. And as of right now, with the money that we set aside for the 2026 budget, we will have a surplus of about $9,000 that we've already set aside for roads. But I'll get more information, I'll get all the details because I don't have those yet, but I wanted to make sure I mentioned it so that you all had a heads up. And then the only other thing I wanted to say is, because it will happen before we have our next meeting, is a thank you to the clerk and the deputy clerk and many of the staff members for their work on, on the election. It has been an enormous amount of work, even for just a small special election. And anyone who's been in the township in the past few weeks knows that from the moment that the doors are open until the moment that they close, and sometimes hours after, the clerk and their team have been working to make sure that it's a successful election. So just wanted to say thank you for that as well, and to remind all of our residents that are eligible to vote. If you live in the Dexter School District, that we do have that special election. So please make sure you, if you haven't already mailed in your ballot or voted absentee, I'm, I'm hoping that everyone will vote on May 6th. And with no further business, I will announce that the meeting is adjourned at 7:30. Uh, and with no further business, uh, I will announce that the meeting is adjourned at seven thirty.
Yeah.